Talk back. It is September 8th, and we are in the middle of beginning of our political season on the local level. You know, we always think about the even number of years, but on the odd number of years in Connecticut, certainly, we are electing our local officials. And I'm happy to have with us guests from my town of Colchester, Connecticut, two people who are very active in the community and politics and all community endeavors, who are running again this year for the Board of Selectmen. So let me introduce them. I have first Rosemary Coyle. Hi, Rosemary.
Hi, Sheila. It's nice to be here.
Nice to see you. And Denise Turner. Hi, Denise.
Hi, Sheila. How are you?
So before we get into talking about what your goals are for your election campaign and what you hope to do if you get in again, let's get a little background in each of you. So let me ask you, Rosemary, how long you've lived in Colchester, what your activities have been, your professional life, your volunteer life, and why you're running again. I know that could take a long time.
I know. I'll be succinct. So moved to Colchester in 1972, so I consider myself a longtime Colchester resident. Raised my daughter there. Was a Montville teacher for 37 years. And since that time, since my retirement, I've been on the Board of Selectmen. I took Jenny Kontois's place. She was the first selectman when she went to work for Joe Courtney. So I learned so much. I've learned so much over the years. And one of the things I tell some of the committees I'm a liaison to is that I chose those committees because I knew nothing about that information. And that's helped me grow in this position. My goal is to always represent the citizens, to be there to help and to solve problems. And over the years, we've done that as a board collectively, though this year there's been more challenges in that. So I have lots of experience. I'm on the Historic District Commission. I belong to the Land Trust. I'm a lion. So Colchester volunteerism, and that's what a selectman is, they're volunteers, even though they're elected, is really a full-time job for me.
So you go back to 1972. I came around 1970. And Denise, when did you arrive in Colchester? Were you born and bred?
I won't tell you exactly the year, but yeah, I was born in Colchester.
That's what I thought. So do you remember when, as in so many New England towns, we did not have a Board of Selectmen? We had a town meeting form of government. Rosemary, what was that like?
I remember that.
What was that like?
Well, it was always very interesting. It was very interesting, and it just depended on who got the people there at what sometimes what the decisions were that were being made.
With all the town business, the ordinances, the rules?
Right. Everything was done at town meeting, yes.
And as the town got bigger, how did it change to?
Well, you know, I think once you had a Board of Selectmen and a First Selectmen, then you had representatives that came together and could focus on the issues. And could make, basically, the Board of Selectmen makes policy. Makes policy and determines, you know, all kinds of things from contracts to anything, any other issue that comes before the town.
Right. Okay. So Denise, tell us about your history and involvement in the town that you were born and bred in.
Born and bred in the town. I'm actually a political life, second generation. My parents were very involved in politics when I was growing up. And I remember, you know, a lot of stuff going on then. Never thought that that was something that I even wanted to do, never mind find myself here. But many, many, many years later, I actually moved away from Colchester. And when I came back, I was asked, you know, just to sit on the Democratic Town Committee, which I did. And, you know, one thing leads to another when they're looking for people. So I started out, I served three terms on the Board of Assessment Appeals. And I did, got thrown into that one. My second term ended up being chair. So I spent four years as chair of the Board of Assessment Appeals.
So that's when people have complaints about the property values that are assessed on them.
Correct.
And they can make an appeal, and your board helps decide what the proper value of the property should be.
Right. You work between what evidence they bring in and then working with the town assessor. And I would always go back, you know, you tell me why you came up with this, and then I can see, you know, and then make a decision from there. It's not an easy job, but it's, I think it's a good place to start if you're gonna get involved in the politics of the town. And then from there, somebody had left the Board of Selectmen, and I kind of slipped in there for half a term. And then I was, this is, I've been elected two full terms.
Four terms?
Two.
Two. And how many terms have you been elected to? Too many?
Too many. Too many to say, because I did eight years on the Board of Ed, too.
So we haven't, so we've mentioned how we've transformed from a town meeting form of government when it was a small new in the town. When I moved to Colchester, there was maybe 3,000 people. Now it's almost 18,000, right? And now we have the Board of Selectmen forum, but we're not mentioning that there's a First Selectmen and a board that you are running for. So describe that. How many people are on the board? And what is the relationship between the First Selectmen and the rest of the board?
Well, the chart is really very specific on what the First Selectmen's responsibilities are and what the Board of Selectmen responsibilities are. And we come together twice, twice a month on the first and the third Thursday of the month to deal with all the decisions of the town from, you know, whether we should, we should, how we should spend the ARPA money. That was a big, big piece of the--
That's the money from the federal government?
The money that came from the federal government. And really, this year, and you know, Denise can speak to this as well, this year, it's been a big focus because it has allowed the town to deal with and address all the maintenance issues and all the neglect that's happened over the years because budgets have been, I believe, too tight. Okay? And it's very hard for town to grow if you try to keep the budget at zero every year.
And importantly, we've been able to do a lot of upgrades for the fire department, which were extremely necessary. Yeah, so that was really good.
So this is money that was granted through the federal government to cities, towns, individuals. That's a different program.
Right.
But all arising out of the economic dislocations of the pandemic. And so now towns can get back on their feet and do the kinds of things that they weren't able to do.
Colchester got $4.6 million.
Right. And so there's a committee that is trying to figure out who deserves getting that money and for what projects and that.
Right. The ARPA Committee made lots of recommendations to us. The Board of Selectmen has not completed all those recommendations. And, you know, so we have till December of 2024 to encumber the money. And then it has to be spent by December of 2026.
Right.
Okay. December 31st, actually, to be exact.
So let's get back to the formation of the Board of Selectmen. How many selectmen are there altogether?
With the First Selectmen?
With the First Selectmen.
The First Selectmen and four additional selectmen.
All right. And, you know, in some cities around the country, if there is no partisanship, elections are not Democratic or Republican. Anyone can put their hat in the ring and run. But in Connecticut, in Colchester, there is partisan. So how does that work? Can there be only one Democrat on this? How does that work?
By state statute, for a five-member Board of Selectmen, there must be at least two people in the category of minority representation. It can be any, any combination. The major party may only have three individuals.
Okay. So on the ballots that we're going to fill out in November, what is that going to look like for the Board of Selectmen? Is the First Selectmen set off separately from the rest of the board?
Yes.
Okay. And who was our, who was the candidate for the Democratic?
Bernie Denler.
Okay. And then--
Super candidate.
How many, we're gonna talk to him and have him on in a couple of days. And how is the rest, how many candidates are there for the other three?
You want to take this one?
There are actually seven candidates for the Board of Selectmen. We've got three on the Republican ticket. We have three on the Democratic ticket, and then one running as a Libertarian.
In another, right, in another party.
Right.
So three are running, but only two Republicans can win or two Democrats can win.
Depending on--
Depending on who the First Selectmen is.
So right now, the configuration of the Board of Selectmen is that the First Selectmen is a Republican right now.
Correct.
And there are, the other three are--
Well, there used to be three Republicans, but one of them has become unaffiliated right now. And then there are two Democrats.
Okay. So there used to be two Republicans on the board, plus the First Selectmen, which would give theoretically the Republicans a majority.
Correct.
And then the two of you--
Right. So we've been in the minority.
In the minority. But that doesn't mean that the other Republican can't support the two of you in certain votes that come before the board. Okay? Even though it has to be voted on in a partisan way. Okay. So you're running, and who's the third person running with you for the board?
Dave Kojie.
Dave Kojie. We'll show his photo later. All right. So what have been the issues the last two years now? We know that two years prior, we had a Democrat, Mary Bylone, who was our First Selectmen. And she was defeated by the current, we won't mention the name, the current selectman who's a Republican. What's been going on in the last two years that you feel it's so important that you get reelected and that Bernie Denler become the new First Selectmen of Colchester?
I'll probably let Rosemary speak to this because she's been working on this for years. But I think one of the biggest things is getting the senior center completed. It has begun. The frame is there, but we're having issues with the funding.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
But hopefully, maybe another referendum might take care of that issue.
There absolutely has to be another referendum on the senior center because due to the pandemic and escalating building costs that grew out of the pandemic, when the bids were open, the bid was $900,000 above what we could, what we initially estimated, which was $9.5 million. That was in October of 2022. Since October of 2022, we have been working to get the administration that's in charge in Colchester to move this to a referendum to allow the people to decide to add that additional money. Right now, we're looking at, we're looking at $1.5 million. And the reason we're looking at $1.5 million is because in January of 2023, two selectmen, Jason LaChapelle, a selectman, and Teras Rittko, decided that they were gonna file a lawsuit, and they stopped the progress of the whole project, project moving forward. We have $575,000 of a memorial gift called the Bendis Money that we cannot use without this additional referendum. We just received $32,691 from the state, a state senior center ARPA grant. We cannot use that either without this additional referendum. And then we're still talking about that same $900,000 that we knew in October of 2022. That has not been resolved. It just gets, keeping, they just keep pushing it down the pike. And at some point, the building, senior center building committee is gonna run out of money. They won't be able to do what they need to do to finish the building. And right now, the steal's already going up. So it's gonna be, it's a challenge. And if we had resolved this in, in October, we wouldn't have to be worried about the interest rate because we would have bonded some money at a much lower interest rate. And I guess that brings us to the bigger issue. And we are very concerned about the financial stability of the town of Colchester. We do not have our 2122 audit.
I read that. Isn't that very rare? Most towns have their audits on time.
Are we about the only one in the state right now?
No, no. I think there are, there are some other towns that are, that, but the problem is, if we don't have a completed audit by this month, we're probably gonna get down, bond rating is gonna be downgraded.
Whose responsibility is that for the audit?
Go ahead, Denise.
We'll say our finance director, under the direction of our First Selectmen. And there have been so many issues that we don't even know, you know, pretty much what's going on in the finance department.
Does the Board of Finance have any role in getting the audit done? What's their responsibility in that?
Well, I mean, they were, they've been expecting this audit, okay? And I don't, I don't think it's, they just keep telling us it's coming, it's coming. It's very hard to get a straight answer to any of the challenging questions.
So how is that gonna change in November if the Democrats take over?
Look at us.
That's a big question because I think when the Democrats take over in November, there'll be much more organization inside of Town Hall. You know, we're, we've lost a lot of employees in Town Hall. So we're working with, you know, departments being short, for one thing. I think the finance department, sounds like it probably needs to be restructured so that it functions correctly. There's just so many other things that need to be done that--
So I hear you have complaints about just the way the organization has not worked on the side of the First Selectmen and the people that work with them.
It's not, it's not working. Sheila, I've been on the Board of Selectmen for a very long time. I have never experienced the situation where everybody didn't work in a bipartisan manner. That's the way it's always been. I've been on the Board of Selectmen and most of the time, under Republican First Selectmen, and some of them are my best friends, okay? And party should have no place, no place in our decision-making. It should have no place in us trying to do the right thing for the town. But under this administration, politics is the number one reason a decision is made. So we've had, some meetings are just a circus. And it's, our last meeting was a circus. And for me, who, I mean, people call me up and they want, you know, I try to help any, any person that calls me with an issue. That's, that's what I stand for, okay? I'll find the information. And one of the, one of the things I always say to them is, look, there's always two sides to a story. So you're presenting one, but I need to research it and find out what the other side of the story is. Because you don't make a decision in isolation. You make it by having all the facts. Talk about questioning, Denise.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Because one of the things is that, you know, when they, when he brings, when the First Selectmen brings stuff to us to vote on, and we'll say, okay, I just have a question. You know, we're not supposed to have questions. We're just supposed to sign off on whatever it is that he wants done. You know, and it's just like, no, I need to have these things answered before I can, you know, vote.
So it sounds like you're dealing with a situation way out of the mainstream of the way you're supposed to behave in a meeting, the way you're supposed to conduct a meeting, the way you're supposed to conduct parliamentary procedure, the way you're supposed to have citizen comments, and be respectful to other people and their points of view. I mean, how bad, how worse than that can it get?
It's like a dictatorship. We have one person who thinks they're supposed to be in charge of everything, you know, by themselves. They don't need permission from, you know, the board to get things done. And the things that normally the board has to approve aren't always approved by the board before they're done, before they're signed off on.
So I guess here's, I guess here's a question. The First Selectmen has to run a lot of things by the board that the board has to confirm and have to authorize. But are there certain things that are within the purview of the First Selectmen that he or she can do on their own?
There are.
And I guess knowing those differences is very important. Knowing your job, knowing when you need to get the board's permission and when you need, you can act on your own is very critical, right?
It is.
And there are circumstances. And just during my time on the board, when we've had situations, when there are circumstances where things needed to be done, you know, almost immediately, they may have been signed off on, but whoever was the First Selectmen at the point in time would contact every single board member and say--
Individually, yes.
Individually, and either say, this is what I need to do, or this is what I did, I need to let you know. And that was fine.
That doesn't happen.
No.
That doesn't happen.
But you know, it's more than that. As a citizen who tunes in sometimes to the Zooms and gets an idea of what's happening, just the tenor of the meetings, the mean-spiritedness, the insults, the lack of following parliamentary procedure, the lack of respect for people in the room and for the rules, it's just really beyond what we've ever experienced before. And I know that, as Rosemary said, although we may be very partisan Democrats when it comes to the statewide elections and national, in the past, in town, it's, there has been a certain amount of cooperation and camaraderie when it came to working in town issues. But no more. And again, you can comment on this. I call it, I hate to bring his name into it, but I call it the Trumpification of Colchester. Is that an accurate comment?
Yes. Yes. That's absolutely accurate. You know, I've always seen my part of my role being a person that's been on there a long time and has all the historical information to be, to sort of be a teacher at times and to share that knowledge. I always felt it was important. It didn't matter to me whether, what, what party you were, but if you had a question and I could provide you an answer with information that helped you make a better decision, I've always been willing to do that. Our First Selectmen doesn't want that. He doesn't, he doesn't care about what the, the actual facts are. He just has a plan and a, a plan in place with his own agenda. And that is, it makes it for very difficult Board of Selectmen meetings. They are unpleasant.
It's, yeah, it's control. Our second meeting, actually, he took off the agenda, the additions and deletions, so that we can never add anything to the agendas.
So I guess now you're in the campaign mode, and we meant, we were talking about this before. How do you stay above the fray? How do you stay classy? How do you stay respectful without getting into the mud of what they're, the other side is doing when what they're doing, you can't let it go unanswered? It's a very, very difficult problem to try to stay above the fray and try to stay classy as you are being right now. How do you, how are you going to run this campaign over the next few weeks?
Well, my, you know, door knocking, door knocking. I think, you know, you talk to the people about who you are, your experience, and why you, why you want to continue doing this. And for me, it's always, it's the people. I do this because of the people and the town. I love this town. I've lived in it a long, long time. And I like to share my knowledge and my experience and with not only my colleagues, and it doesn't, like I said before, it doesn't matter who they are. But so at a board meeting, I try to follow Robert's rules, but it doesn't matter. We passed a motion at the last board meeting. Three, three of the select women passed a motion, which the First Selectmen absolutely ignored. That was to postpone an item on, items on the agenda. He ignored it. He ripped up the agenda, and he did what he wanted anyway. So how, how do you deal with that? And he wanted us to leave. Basically, he wanted us to leave. And when, when he, when he was done with his circus, he turned the meeting off. Didn't even let people speak at Citizens Council. So.
And I think the other part of it, too, is like, you know, we try to just put out the facts, you know? Whatever they're putting out, put out the facts, the truth. And, you know, people make their own decisions. And people seem to pretty much, there are gonna be a, a certain group of people that are gonna follow them no matter what. But I think most people are sensible, and they see the facts, they see what's going on.
So when you're going on your door-to-door, you sense that people are aware of what's happening.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, definitely.
Yes, big town.
And you think there's a big drumbeat to defeat him in November.
We can't, we can't keep going like this. I worry for the fiscal, you know, well-being of the town of Colchester. All right? That, that has to be resolved. We need a leader that's going to, that understands what it's like to run a town, that understands how important the financial piece is, and that's willing to provide an environment in Town Hall where our workers want to stay. We've lost, we lost over 26 employees since this First Selectmen was elected.
Not to mention, there's some lawsuit by one employee of the town against the First Selectmen.
He's doing his deposition today on that.
And so they're embroiled in that kind of stuff. And as well, I believe the Republican Party at one time censured the First Selectmen or had a vote of no confidence against them. Now somehow, they patched things up for the coming election. Is that right?
I don't know if they've--
We don't know if it's patched up, but it's not clear.
They are supporting the candidacy of this First Selectmen. I wouldn't, I can't tell so much that they've patched things up, yeah. But they're supporting his candidacy.
Yeah. Let me talk, ask you, Denise, about an issue that you have been involved in, and that's the issue of diversity and the commission, a committee that you help create and run. So many communities around the state, around the country, think it's important that each town understand how important it is to get the diversity of people together on certain issues. How, and what happened in these last two years? You haven't been able to go forward with that. What happened?
Well, we have, the chair of the commission right now doesn't, I don't know how to say this. The chair of the commission right now doesn't push when it comes to, you know, the real issues that need to be. And there are certain times that statement should have been put out, you know, with the library, the thing that happened with the library and whatnot. And the commission was working on a statement to put out. And at the last minute, she did put up a vote to, you know--
That was a whole issue of taking a book out of the library, not following the procedure.
Right. 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 So when, I mean, she's very good at promoting the commission and, you know, working with diversity and everything like that. But when it comes to the real issues, we haven't been able to--
And didn't the First Selectmen make a statement that, well, Colchester doesn't need any diversity comments? So there's no racism in this town?
Right.
Denise, why don't you explain how that is such an uneducated comment to make?
That is a very uneducated comment. Most of the people that I've heard or I've looked at and I've seen the comments, all the people that were commenting, and there's no racism in town, have been white people. So you don't know. And I tell people, it's like, you know, I went through the school system in town, and let me tell you, we had racism in our school system back when I was there. My parents were even stopped from buying the house that they wanted to buy. Oh, yes. Back in 19, it was 1956. One of the developments, you know, in town, and that was the big thing, was buying the houses in the developments. And they wanted to buy a house in the development. They were stopped from buying the house because the, the person who owned the development was ready to sell it to them until they were told, you won't sell any more houses if you sell to them. So yes, there's been a lot of racism in that town. And I experienced it all through school.
See, people think of your family as such a wonderful family, and they, they don't realize that underneath all of that, there has been a lot of slights, a lot of racist things.
And the thing that I tell people also, I said, you know, people that were closest to me didn't know what I went through because it's not something you just talk about. So for you to say that, you know, you know black people or there's no racism in town, you've never seen it or you've never experienced, you don't know. But it's there.
Yes. So that's just one example of the insensitivity, the ignorance, the uneducated comments, the insults that just seem to be rampant coming out of that administration.
We get insulted personally at Board of Selectmen meetings. Okay? The last meeting was particularly, particularly offensive. Particularly offensive. And, you know, if he doesn't go after you, he goes after family members. And that's, that's, that's not Colchester. That's not what a Board of Selectmen is supposed to be doing. All of that politics is supposed to be outside. You can do whatever you want outside our meetings, but we don't get the business of the town done. We didn't vote on a union contract. We didn't vote on two other contracts that needed to be voted on last Wednesday because, because of the politics.
So you have to shine a light on your candidate, Bernie Denler, and your plans. So I'm gonna show little slides of all the people running on your ticket so people can see that. But before we do that, each of you, what are the top three campaign promises or things or issues that need to be taken care of once, hopefully, the Democrats get back into the First Selectmen and other places?
You know, first of all-- You know, first of all, I, I have never, I've campaigned a lot of times for a lot of different things, and I don't ever believe in making a promise. I set goals for myself. And I, I think one of, one of our goals is we have to get the senior center completed. That, that's because it's gonna be more than a senior center. Everybody's gonna be able to use that building, and it's gonna be an awesome addition to, to the town. I, I think the net, one of the other things I need to do, we need to do is we need to, we need to talk about a new youth center because right now, the, the youth center is just about uninhabitable. And we also need to talk about getting, we worked for years, and Rob Tarlov and I didn't always agree when he was the chair of the Board of Finance, but we worked for years to put this town in, in a, in great financial stability, okay? So that we had our, our debt service, there was a debt service plan, there was, there was, you know, a, a way to pay for new things, like the senior center. And I believe that's all in jeopardy. So that has to be like, A number one is to get, get our finances back in order. And we have, you know, certainly have people that work with us, our financial planners and, and our bond counsel, that, that can help and assist in that. So we, we need to do some of those things. But we need to bring, bring order back to Board of Selectmen meetings, to Board of Finance meetings. And we need, we need to, the people need to know that their voices are heard. This year, what happened to the parents on the Board of Ed budget was unconscionable, okay? But they were able to organize and send a message to, to, to not pass the budget because it was too low, okay? And they did, were able to get $300,000 put back into the budget.
Well, that's an interesting point that you make because so often, it's so easy for so many of the Republican slates to just say, no more taxes, no more spending, and you get so- and Democrats understand that there has to be a balance between what the needs are, what the town can afford, and sometimes you might need to increase something because like in that Board of Education, they had to increase to satisfy the needs of the, of the children in the town. So, you know, go ahead, Denise.
I was gonna say, even the parents, you know, understood that because a lot of them would even say, no, I also cannot afford it, but I know what these children need, and I'm willing to pay the extra taxes, you know?
Right, but, but, but when you have good financial stability, that some of this, like originally, the senior center was, because we've kept, kept the debt service at a constant level, the senior center isn't, wasn't gonna impact the mill rate or the debt service. I don't know if I can answer that question now because we still don't have an audit. We don't know what's gonna happen to our bond rating. And, and no one seems to think, in leadership, the Board of Finance chair and the first selectman don't seem to think that that's a critical issue facing our town.
Any other goals for the next term besides getting that first selectman's office changed and working order?
Yep, and getting our budget in order.
Budget, senior center, youth center.
And one thing that I would like to see us working, which I'm very passionate about in town of Colchester, is affordable housing. Because we don't have a lot of affordable housing, and the housing that seems to be coming in is extremely high-end. The average family that lives in town can't afford the housing that's coming in, you know?
So that's an issue, affordable housing. And of course, it's controversial, there are always people who are opposed and-
I, I would also like to see, the town and the Board of Ed were always, worked in a cooperative relationship. That isn't, that no longer exists under this administration. And that, they act like the Board of Education is a separate town and a separate entity. And, and that's not to the benefit of our town. Because working together, there are multiple, multiple times there are solutions that, that can be shared solutions, and that saves the town money. So that's why I'm looking forward to a new administration with Bernie Denler because he has lots of experience.
All right, let's turn to our slides. Studio, can you start showing the slides? Here it is, the Colchester Democratic Town Slate 2023, that's all of you. And the center is Bernie Denler, keep going. So we can, oh, there he is, Bernie, leadership and vision. What makes him special that we need, we need to elect him?
He, he has experience working in municipality as he works in a Town Hall for Lebanon, for the first selectman. So he comes with a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience as to how municipalities work.
Okay, all right, let's go on. There he is. Okay, he is with his partner and their pet.
Tyco.
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 And let's bring Colchester together, that's his slogan. And, or there you are, with Bernie, running for selectman. And there's Dave Kojie, right? He's standing next to Denise.
Yes.
On the sign, the Colchester sign, how, what year was it? 16? Yep.
Yeah.
Colchester, Bacon Academy, and so forth. All right, let's go on. There you are. The three Democrats running for Board of Selectmen, keep going. And there you are, open to all, that's in front of the Craig and Memorial Library, I assume, right?
Yes.
It is.
Okay. Rosemary, there you are, these are good photos. Denise, Dave Kojie. And then there you are in front of the museum, the Historical Society Museum. And Gail Furman, a town clerk, she's running again for reelection.
Yep.
Michelle, tax collector. The town clerk and tax collector. Okay, there they are in front of the museum. Sean Gillespie, running for treasurer. And there he is with Gail and Michelle. Karen, a new person running for the Board of Finance.
Right.
And Scott Chapin, also running for the Board of Finance. And the three of them, two of them with Sean, running for treasurer, the finance people. Chris Rivers, he's an incumbent in the Board of Education. Michelle Millington, she's on the board now, running again. And a new candidate, Stephanie Tracy Kalash, Board of Education. And there they are, together with Bernie, the first selectman candidate.
I think that's at Old Bacon.
And in front of Bacon Academy.
Yep.
One of the oldest schools in the state of Connecticut, started as a private academy, now run by the town, right?
It's one of the oldest in the country.
And then the board that you started on, Denise, the Board of Assessment Appeals, with Andrew Canoia and Krista Curtis. And there's Krista and Andrew, he's been on that board for a while now.
Yes.
Yes, he has.
And the town, the whole slate, including on the bottom row, the chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, Monica Swine, who stuck herself in that photo.
Yeah, she did.
All right, thank you. Great, so that's the slate, and the photographer was great, who-
It was Monica's son.
Monica, did a great-
Monica's son.
Did a great job. I did a little editing of the photos, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, so final thoughts. Why do you need to get in in November?
Well, I would like to be there to work with the new administration. I'd like to work with Denise again because it's been an honor and a privilege. I feel like I bring, you know, history, I bring knowledge, I bring a commitment to the citizens. And, and no matter what the issue, I'll listen and I'll work toward finding a resolution and a goal. So, and I have to finish that senior center, that's my, that's my-
Senior center.
That's my number one goal, is to finish the senior center.
All right, final thoughts, Denise?
I'd like the opportunity to continue working, you know, moving Colchester forward and to, to work with the new administration and to, you know, make sure that things get corrected. And I also, like Rosemary, would love to see the senior center finished and be a part of that. You know, I, I work in a nonpartisan manner, I don't care about politics. And Colchester needs good people, you know, to, that understand the people and understand the needs of the people. And I think we can fit that bill.
So let's hope that the tenor of politics changes, we get back to real governing in a cooperative, reasonable-
Civil manner.
Civil manner. And you two will help lead the way with the new first selectman, all right? Okay, that's it for today on Talk Back. We'll be interviewing other people who are running in Colchester for the local offices. See you next time, bye.